To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Did we do roll call?
No.
Nope, we didn't. We'll do that next.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Councilmember Schroeder, here. Councilmember Fisickelli, here. Councilmember Jablonski, here. Vice Mayor Brian Cruz, here. Mayor McKay, here.
Thank you. Do we have many? I do want to say something ahead of time. We do have some people, not only from Waste Pro here, but also from Bergerons. And so anybody has any questions at the end of the meeting, you can ask them or whatever, because the meeting should be fairly quick. So any meetings you want to add, any questions you want to ask of them or whatever, feel free to do that at the end of the meeting if you would, because it should be a quick meeting. So, thank you. Any public comment?
We have one speaker, David Kozinski.
One? Okay.
One more on the way.
Okay.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holathee Trail. Good evening, council. Couple of issues I want to speak to you tonight. First of all, with a heavy heart, want to speak about the father of the former president of our homeowners association, Annie Ruiz. Her father passed away. It was yesterday or the day before. So, our condolences and our heavy heart out to her. Yesterday, we had our meeting of our homeowners association. And a couple of things that we spoke about. Good news is, if you're aware of these brown signs, say, "Welcome to Sunshine Ranches." We approved replacing the signs with new covers over the signs with a white with our logo in front of them. So, signs will be replaced. Don't know exactly when, but they're in process. The other issue has to do with there are residents in, that I've been told of, who are taking advantage of the waste removal from the hurricane. They're cutting down trees that have not been damaged from the hurricane. And primarily, I was told on Appaloosa, there's, I was told that one of the houses, this big yellow house, looks like a church. There were giant royal palms that were not disturbed during the hurricane, and they have cut them up, and they're now on the side of the road. We put out as hurricane debris. And that was passed on to me from a neighbor. Another neighbor complained to me that when, on Holathee, when she went behind her home, that she had four feet of water in the back of her home. And it had something to do with the neighbor behind there. Their berm doesn't exist, is not solid enough, but she had four feet of water behind her home. Those are the issues that I've been brought to, and maybe the council can do something regarding these issues. But that's what I have to share with you this evening. I wish you a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madison Sullivan.
Hi.
Hi, Madison.
I'm Madison Sullivan, and I live on 17200 South West 59th Court. And Veterans Day falls on a Saturday this year, and the town hall will be closed. But I feel like we should celebrate our veterans in South West Ranches like all the other towns do around us. And there's a council meeting on Thursday, November 9th, and I would like to see the town invite and recognize our veterans at a meeting. The town of Davie has an honor guard that could present the colors, and I would be happy to sing the national anthem. And maybe someone could say a prayer, too. And I think it'd be nice to put it on the yearly calendar as a town event, too.
That's a good suggestion. Let me jump in and ask you if you would like to come to the council meeting on the 9th of October.
November.
The 9th of November, excuse me, the 9th of November. And if we could have the honor guard here or whatever, and sing the plays or whatever at that time would be very cool.
Okay.
What do you all think?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's a great suggestion.
Can you do that? Do you have the time or on your calendar to be able to do that?
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Ken, we'll work with Madison to round out the program a little bit for that meeting.
Okay. Awesome. That'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Good job, Madison.
Thank you, Madison. Appreciate it.
Final speaker, Velma Lopez.
I'm Velma Lopez. I'm the vice president of our HOA. I live on 5360 Volunteer Road, and I'm really talking on behalf of my neighbors. There is a job going on Volunteers South of Sterling, and everyone is asking me what's going in there, because there is lots of machinery, dirt, and wiring being laid out. So, I would like to know from the town what's going in there, because we have no idea. Thank you.
Keith, you want to answer this one, since you know it better than we do?
Water.
Do they require to have so many wiring and ones of annoyance to the neighbors to close roads and everything? I have seen. I went once trying to get in one of those, and it was closed. That's where I noticed it was closed.
Sorry, second?
I tried to go to one of my friends that live in one of those roads, and there was a job going.
Which road?
Marvin or Sunset.
There's no roads closed.
Not at this time. It was at a point closed.
No.
If, I haven't seen any roads closed over there. If it was, it would have been only briefly while they were doing some work.
Maybe that's when I, that's when I drove by.
Yeah, there's a home being constructed on Marvin Lane, and there was city water from Sunrise Utilities being connected over to that property at the expense of the homeowner, not at town expense.
Okay.
So, that must have been off of Sunset.
But it'll be, it'll be a short-term project. I think they got interrupted by the hurricane. I know that caused some problems. But we expect it to be done shortly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. See, no additional public comment? Public comment is closed? Let's see, back to council, board reports. Any board reports?
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage Committee. We had our meeting a little bit off-cycle this month because of the storm. Everybody thought it'd be more prudent to go prepare their homes for what at the time was a Cat 4 or 5 storm. So, we pushed it up two weeks. And it must have conflicted with council member night at Uncle Al's or something, because nobody was able to make it. But we did cover some important ground that we wanted to bring to your attention. We talked about, as you guys all know, because see that you've been coming to the meetings forever, or you're the past chairs of the Drainage Committee, filling property has always been a problem, and probably is something we'll never solve 100% until the town's completely built, and then we'll still have problems. Everybody's aware, we currently have three tiers of fill permits. We have different types of penalties and fee structures. Fee structures depending on which type of permit you want, and penalties depending on what you do, I guess. We had a lot of discussion about escalating the penalties, increasing, lowering the price of the fill permits. I mean, we talked about every possible permutation. And at the end of the day, we took a vote, and our vote, how can I put this best? We voted on essentially keeping the structure the way it is today. Not increasing penalties. We don't like the idea of punitive. We don't like the idea of making people tear out the fill as well if they put something in illegally. Let's make them whole. Let's make them come around and follow the law. Now, something that, I forget who brought it up, but it was a great idea, and it wasn't George for a change. He's usually the one who brings the new ideas to the table. But the thinking was that if somebody does something wrong, let's have them go through the process. But we should probably get the town engineer involved, because they've done it wrong from the start. Or if somebody's done something egregious, where they were supposed to have brought in, you know, 100 loads of fill, and they brought in 300 loads of fill, if the engineer gets involved, he can work with them to figure out where they went south, what they did wrong, and help them correct it. Now, that's where the additional fees should come in. If they've overfilled their property, if they haven't done their berms properly, or whatever the deficiency is, the administration should come up with some sort of a cost recovery for Rod's time. Apparently, he goes out on a lot of these, where somebody put a berm in wrong, or dug a hole wrong, or did something like that wrong that affects the drainage, and it's generally related to fill. If the person is going to have to correct it, they should pay for the engineer's time. You shouldn't be out there giving them free assistance. And that's, in essence, I don't have our minutes yet. John hasn't delivered them up. But we basically passed a motion to keep the fee structures and the penalties as they are, but at the discretion of the administration and the engineer, attach additional fees to correct the problem. So, if Rod's got to spend 60 hours on the job because they did something really crazy, whatever the hourly rate is that the town would charge for his time would be the penalty, or the additional fees that they'd have to pay. I'm getting looks. Does it make sense that I explained it properly? I mean, essentially, what we're looking is, don't penalize people any more than we already are. We don't want to take punitive action. We don't want to have them drag out the fill. Let's just have them correct it properly, so they do things right, and they'd have to pay for the engineer's time for what he's involved. Just to summarize. Thank you. If you have any questions. Okay.
Any other board reports?
Debbie. I'm here on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, because Kathy's making me talk, even though she's here.
I did do one.
We had, we had talked at one of our meetings, and I, I don't know that it's come to you, or, I'm not sure if it has or hasn't, but it hasn't been on the agenda. And one of, we had some ladies that came to speak to us from, it's a program called Broward Reads. That, it's a national campaign that Broward County has joined into this national campaign, and then it's, it's just.
This one. I just jumped by it for some reason.
You know, helping with the reading literacy, love of books, and that kind of thing. We thought it would be a great opportunity for the board to then reach out to the community, whether it's within our community or partnering with other communities. But what we need so that we can partner with this, the Broward County program, Broward Reads, is for the town to make a, pass, I guess, a resolution or a proclamation saying that the town of Southwest Ranches will be, is a Broward Reads town or city.
Keith, this one's on you. Yeah, they're looking for a resolution or something of some sorts to pass for Broward Reads to be a part.
So that we can be part of.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, I think it's, I think it's more of a simple proclamation, as opposed to a formal action by the council.
Okay.
And I did discuss that with the staff liaison for the board, and we're certainly looking to move that forward.
So, yeah, if we can move it forward, because we'd really like to get working on it.
Debbie, I apologize. It might have fallen between the cracks, and I certainly didn't mean for you to do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
But we're looking to move that forward.
Council's on board with this, right? Okay.
And then, just one of the other things, just to let everyone know, is the Education Advisory Board is also, we're having our, the second annual Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches Pageant. It's going to be October 22nd. So, if anybody has any kids, nieces, grandchildren, friends, whatever, it was a great event. It was lots of fun. Talent, we had some kids that, you know, just did some tumbling, and one of the girls read one of her favorite poems to her. I don't remember, it was a big lizard. I don't remember what he's called, but, you know. So, it's just, it was just a lot of fun, and all the kids that participated had a great time. So, anyone out there that would like to, and if there's anyone here, I have information and some registration forms. Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Deb. Any other board reports? Kathy forgot something. Go ahead.
I'm going to do for Rolling Oaks.
Okay.
Kathy Sullivan. We had our Roca Board meeting, and just wanted to tell everybody our annual town-wide Halloween event. This year's October 28th. It's on a Saturday. We're doing something different. We've had it every year on Halloween. Madison's never trick-or-treated anywhere but in the Rolling Oaks Park. But we've had some suggestions that we move it to a weekend. So, Saturday, the 28th, Halloween, town-wide event. We have huge participation throughout the town, but we would love to have more. So, if anybody would like to put a group together and have, say, the Sunshine Ranches group out there in the field or anything else, we would love the participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to let you know that the Historical Society is ready to start taking your money for.
For what?
For a listing in the historic, actually, on your website, on the town website. You must be a resident of the town, and we will list your business, and it costs $100 a year. If you want to have it roll over to your website, it's an additional 50. But we're ready now to start. And so, all you have to do is either call Town Hall, or you can call me.
Is it businesses only, or residents also?
We're not doing the residents. We were going to, and list them for free, but the majority of the residents don't want their phone number or their address. And so, we just felt, right now, we'll do it this way. If there's a request to go with residents, then we'll do the residents. But right now, this is the way we're going. And it's really important, because people call and want to know who's a good plumber.
Is it going to be listed, like, yeah, like electrical plumbing?
Yeah, anything you are. We really, we would like to have all the barns that we have in town, what their services are, if they're boarding, if they teach or whatever. We'd like to list them. Anything. And you don't have to have your business in town. In other words, just that you live in town, and, you know, you have a business.
Okay.
But if you don't live in town, we will not put you on there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other board reports? See, no others. That's closed. Councilmember comments? Who would like to start?
I'll go first.
Gary, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We just passed a budget that was pretty good. Kept our rate the same as last year, and we're moving forward. So, just want to mention that. A great job was done by town, town staff, and it passed very quickly with minimal questions on our part. And, you know, that's, that's a big, that's a, that's a big thing in our favor, that we were able to do that. Especially when you see in the news, others, other municipalities that are bickering back and forth over minutia or big stuff, and we're all pretty much on, you know, we're all five sails sailing in the same direction, which is, I think that's probably one of the most important things to gleam from this. Having said that, I just want to go over a few things that we have going, going on. Everybody probably doesn't know this yet, but we have our new town calendars available at the front desk, and they're the photo contest winners. And we just happen to have Mr. January here in the front row, Bob Hartman. So, I thought I'd, thought I'd mention that. You know, he'll probably get even with me later. But anyway, some great photography in there, some great pictures, and it's almost funny.
Yeah, it's good.
It's funny. Anyway, they're available, I think, at their $5 each, and it's basically what it costs us to make them at the, at the front office. Andy, if you could comment on hazmat when it's your turn, I'm not going to say too much about it on the 14th. If you would make a note of that, I would, I would appreciate that. We have something new coming up at the barn on Wednesday, starting the 11th in October. It's called What to Do Wednesday. Now, in the calendar, it says What Not to Do Wednesday. So, that was a typo. It's right there. Okay? And I just spotted it a little while ago. So, that's incorrect. It's What to Do Wednesday, and the first class deals with quilting. It's from 11:00 to 2:00 at the barn. And the second class is, it's the 25th, and it deals with computer usage. So, anyway, I just want to mention, want to mention that to you, that the word "not" was not, it's a typo. So, moving on. 21st, we have the annual, the 11th Annual Arts and Crafts Show at the Equestrian Park, put on by December and crew, and does a fantastic job. And I urge everybody to come out there, do a little, do a little holiday shopping beforehand. You get some really nifty stuff that's there. And then on the 22nd, we have Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches Pageant at the barn. That is a lot of fun. I know Debbie Green got up and spoke about it for a minute there, but I was there at the one last year, and it was, it was quite a treat. And I urge everybody to come out and take a look at it. It was a lot of fun. The kids had a blast, the parents had a blast, and it was quite enjoyable. On the 22nd, 28th, I'm sorry, we have Halloween at the barn. It's an annual event put on by the Rolling Oaks Civic Association, but the whole town's invited. We have a hot on trail. It's a Saturday night. And we have the trick-or-treat road for, for all the kids, and all the adults, you know, sit down and hang out and have adult beverages and things of that nature, and eat a lot of candy, and pretzels and popcorn. So, it's a, it's a lot of fun. It's a great way to meet your neighbors and say hi to all the little kids, and they're all, they're all really cute, and they're all in their little costumes and everything, and everybody likes it. So, want to mention that, the 28th. We have the Education Advisory Board in conjunction with Hawks Bluff. This is a delayed move because of storm food truck event on November 17th. I believe it's 6:00 to 9:00?
Five to nine.
Five to nine. Thank you, Doug. And it's a lot of fun. There's going to be a lot of raffles and giveaways and things of that nature at the event. So, I urge everybody to attend that. A lot of food trucks, and it's quite enjoyable. And that's on the 17th. And then on the 18th, we're going to have the Parks Foundation, Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation, the car show at the barn, starting at 12:00 PM. The last two years, we've had a dunk tank. The council members have gotten up there.
No.
Okay. You know, maybe, maybe you can do the dart toss or something like that. But, but anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun. And so, I just want to start announcing that. That's going to be the 18th for our car, car show.
Dunk people to futurally be announced.
Say again, no?
Whoever we're dunking will be futurally announced. Not yet.
Okay.
Bob Hartman.
House member. All right. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Who's next? Dee, you up?
I'll let you go last, because you always got a great finish that goes on and on and on and on.
You. You were, you were Gary.
I just want to say thank you for everybody for coming out. I'd like to say a special thanks to Madison, because if you have not ever heard her sing, she absolutely has a delicious little voice. And I can't wait. It's going to be fun. I want to thank the Bergeron people for being here, so that if you have any questions, you can ask them. I would like to thank our Waste Pro people for being here. Remember, our glasses are half-full and not half-empty. And if not, we can pick a fight with that. During the hurricane, the staff was incredible. And my hats off to all of them for all their hard work and effort, and a special thanks to you, Sandy. You did an incredible job, Andy, everybody. This was my first year of working on this budget, and it was absolutely incredible. The work that goes into it. Marty, I understand why you're here at 10 o'clock at night. I get it now. I really get it. I got the autograph here to prove it. But it, it really was something that, when you're involved in it, the appreciation is just incredible. I never really appreciated all the work and effort that you guys put into it, Andy, Keith, Marty, everybody. But I, I promise not to complain so much anymore, now that I had to be a part of it. But I'm glad it's over. I, and I'm not looking forward to February, starting all over again, but I'm glad it's over now, and I think that's all I had to say. But I'm not getting in the dunk tank, Gary.
She's not getting in the dunk tank. Who wants to go next? Freddie, you good? Steve? Steve, you up?
Yeah, I got a few things. First of all, I did want to, I'm sorry, I didn't even get to meet the two gentlemen. You all from Bergeron?
Yes, sir.
Let me just say that we appreciate the service that you all are bringing to our town. Reading the articles of the trials and tribulations that other communities are going through, you all are doing a quality job, and it's very much appreciated. And thank you for coming out tonight. Doing a great service to our town. Thank you. We also have, as Dee mentioned, some representatives from Waste Pro, and I just wanted to welcome them to our town as well. We're looking forward to having you all partner with us on our normal waste pickup. And we're just pleased to have you here, and, and thank you for taking the time to introduce it. And if you haven't picked up your little waste truck for your grandchild like I have, there's, there's a few more up there, and so enjoy that. But welcome, and thank you. Speaking of that, I did want to say, for the debris, for the hurricane that's, that's going on, I think, as I mentioned, I think you all are doing an excellent job, and it's very much appreciated. But while I have a moment here, I did want to draw some distinctions and maybe some recommendations for the residents of the town. This is not our normal bulk pickup. There's a lot heavier items that are being picked up, and there's a lot more substantial equipment, heavier equipment, that's doing the picking up. And so, therefore, the, there's more damage to the swales, things we, you know, we certainly encourage, and I know you all have been having conversations with the administration, to try and minimize that. But we do recognize that that is going to occur to some degree, because this is, these are big pieces of equipment that are trying to clean out our town. So, I would just, you know, encourage the residents to just kind of understand that a little bit, and be a little tolerant of that. And, you know, if we have to put down some seed, or give it a little time to grow back the next rainy season, it'll come back. I promise it'll come back. And so, but just keep that in mind. The other, the other point along that line that I wanted to make was, this pickup is strictly and exclusively for storm debris. And what that means is that other things that get put out there, things that are damaged, like maybe, you know, yeah, I've seen barbecue grills. I've seen, like, I've seen a treehouse that was put out there. Very nice treehouse. It was at one time. It's not now. But that's not, that's not going to get picked up. And when that is mixed in with the regular vegetation debris, it takes longer to separate it out, and it takes longer to pick it up, and it's going to add time to, you know, the whole project as being done. So, so please, don't put that out yet. There'll be a time when we get into more of our normal cycle, when you can put that out. So, I just, I just encourage you to do those two things. One other thing that I did want to mention is, one of the things that really helped out during the storm was a service that the town provides called Rapid Notify. And what it is, is you can register one or more phones. I know I've got the house phone and my cell both registered. And what happens is that when there's a major event, some kind of, certainly the hurricane is one of them, storm event, you'll start getting calls to tell you what's going on in the town, how we're preparing, anything, any issues. If we, if we had set up, if we had the need to have, set up like a central location to distribute ice or water or things like that, you would have heard it there. Instructions that I just relayed on about the pickup, that was provided through the Rapid Notify. It keeps you in touch with what's going on. It helps you hear the latest from the town. You know, a lot of times when you're watching TV, you hear what's going on in Tallahassee, or down the Keys, or in West Palm Beach, or whatever, maybe Fort Lauderdale, but you don't really hear what's, what's really, how it's going to impact Southwest Ranches, and this is the best way to do it. So, if you have not signed up for that, it's easy to do. Just call Town Hall, and they will, they will get you set up on that. So, and I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Freddie, you got anything? You good?
Well, I'd like to say thank you. The staff did a stupendous job. The only, the only complaint I have, which is not our fault, was the notification to I have, which is not our fault, was the notification to tell us no black bags and six-foot-sized stuff. We got a week or 10 days after the fact. I think in the future, we should have that out a week ahead of time. But we got past that late information from FEMA, wherever we got it from. And so, we passed it out as we got it. Unfortunately, a lot of people had already put stuff out in brown, in black bags and whatnot. So, we'll deal with it as we can. I want everybody to realize it's going to be months. And when I say months, it's probably going to go on into the new year, in reality speaking. So, we're, how many passes are we hoping for, Andy? At least two, possibly three?
Mayor, if I, I kind of hate to say that, because we want to encourage people to get it out.
Oh, no question.
Because we don't want this to drag on with multiple passes.
Right.
But we're certainly looking at a minimum two, probably three.
Right.
And hopefully, certainly, the amount of debris will lessen each time. Our goal right now is to collect as much as we can, as fast as we can.
Right, right, right. But in our town...
And we're doing a good job to do that. But there are people in town who have, from one edge of their property to the other, filled with debris, and have more debris to put out.
Exactly.
You know, I recognize that. I'm sure we have others who haven't...
Even started.
Certainly completed...
Right.
Their, you know, removal of trees and things like that as well. So, it's unfortunately, it's going to be a long process. There's, for anybody who's driven anywhere in this town, you know there's a tremendous amount of debris out there. Our vendor's doing certainly a very good job getting started. There's just, there's just a lot of it. It's going to take some time.
So, if the residents would please bear with us, if you have any questions or want to know something, call Town Hall. We'll answer it the best we can. There is a map that we have on the wall in one of the front chambers there, that they come in in the morning and show where they're going to be working that day. So, whether they get through that road that day or not is a whole different story. So, please be patient. Please bear with us. It's a daunting task, and we all will get through this together. So, try to be neighborly, be helpful, and let's do what we can. And on top of all of everything, please don't light any fires. Please don't burn the stuff in your backyard, because embers and stuff can fly to somewhere else, and you're going to have the whole town on fire before you know it. So, let's please not light any fires. Would be greatly appreciated.
All right. I'm good other than that. Anyone else? We're good? Okay. Legal comments?
Sure, Mayor. First, I was saddened to see of the loss of you, Hefner, yesterday. Guy taught me how to read.
[laughing]
He taught a lot of little boys how to read.
I've already just got that one. All right. Things happening in the town. First off, as it relates to a collection of debris, I just spoke to Russell and thought to bring it up now. A lot of residents in this town live on private roadways. And obviously, there becomes many issues in the town being allowed to legally collect debris on private roadways as it relates to our reimbursement with FEMA. The town is currently drafting an agreement which meets FEMA's standards in order for us to get reimbursement to be allowed to access these private roadways. It essentially makes us declare it an emergency to access those roadways, and to clear the roadways, and to remove the debris. FEMA is requiring any resident who lives on a private roadway will have to sign that agreement in order to get the debris removed from the area in front of their home. So, to get it out there, if you live on a private roadway, Russell will have the agreement done next week, and we'll start disseminating that, and everyone will have to sign it and send it in, or the debris in front of your house will not be picked up. It's not legally allowed to be picked up. So, if someone calls in and says, you know, "Why hasn't my debris been picked up?" One of the reasons may be that they live on a private roadway, and they need to sign the agreement. We've been very busy as our litigation with Pines continues and progresses towards a trial date of November thirteenth. As a result of the ridiculous amount of financial resources that are going to be put into the full-blown trial, Andy reached out to Charlie Dodge to see whether or not there could be some meeting of the minds in an attempt to amicably resolve disputes. We had an initial and preliminary meeting with Charlie Dodge today. We spoke for probably a half hour to an hour, and he said he will get back to us. So, we will keep everyone posted if we are able to reach any sort of compromise that is worthwhile to share with the council.
Did I have anything else on that?
That was it, Mayor.
Okay. Andy, I think you're up, buddy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, on the garbage, debris, et cetera, collections, I think council's done a good job of covering it. I do want to thank the folks from Waste Pro for being here tonight. We're looking forward to working with you. It starts out on Monday, and I'm expecting some real nice improvements in service. I think we're going to be in real good shape. On the hurricane debris, I want to thank Rob Maples and Jason Ottilidge for being here from Bergeron. You guys have addressed them, but that's who they are by name. Rob, I know you've been working very hard on the emergency management aspect of it. For many of you, and for many of our residents, you may recognize Jason in orange, because he's been the guy who's been in charge of and supervising our normal boat collections for quite some time. And so, I know he's, if anybody's familiar with every street in town, it's probably Jason. So, I thank you both for being here for tonight, and for what you guys have been doing for us. On the hazmat, Councilmember Jablonsky brought that up. We do have a, our next hazmat is scheduled for October fourteenth, which is normally out at Rolling Oaks Park. We're in the process of trying to work with our vendor on that. I, at this point, as I sit here today, I don't know that we're going ahead with that. We certainly hope to. But a lot of those same resources are deployed, and some of those people are deployed on some of the emergency management aspects of it. So, we're working on that. We'll have an answer for you, obviously, as quick as we can, so that we can let the public know. Onto the budget. I do want to thank you all once again. This was truly a collaborative process. Council was involved in that. You know, I said we start in February. The good news is, for all of you, you guys don't, although you're certainly welcome to think about it, make those comments and suggestions. The staff does a lot of the groundwork in advance before we start our meetings with you guys in, let's say, April and May, and putting the proposed book together to get to you in July. But it's really a year-round process from a staff standpoint. And so, I do want to thank you all. There was, as I said earlier, there were some challenges this year. You guys all had certainly, I'll say, different interests, but you also had the interest of the community as your common goal, and it made it easy for us, from a staff standpoint, to work with you all to turn out a good quality product. And so, staff worked hard to work with council. Council worked hard to work with staff. We got a lot of input from the residents, and it was, you know, when it passes tonight, it's a wonderful experience, and I thank you again for that. And I do want to single out Marty one last time for his efforts on this, because... Marty is a workhorse, and, you know, just turns out just a tremendous project, product, and leads us through that. So, I thank him for that. The only other thing I'll tell you is, you know, the budget process, it's before you know it, it's that time again. Other things work the same way. The state legislative session kicks off in February. We had a meeting yesterday with our lobbyists, and getting ready to work on the new list of projects for next year. And, you know, we'll be looking to get what, certainly what funding we can to assist with the budget process and other projects that are important to council and to the residents. And I think that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have any questions.
No, the only thing I want to know, or to put on everybody's ear, is anybody that would like to go to Tallahassee this year, Broward Days is seventh and eighth, I think, in February. So, just put it on your calendar, look around if you think you'd like to go or participate. I fully intend to go and attend. So, let Andy know if you guys want to go, whether you want to fly, drive, whatever you want to do. I intend on driving, so anybody who wants to ride along, feel free. Other than that, that's all I've got. All right.
Ordinance number eight, if you would read, please.
In ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article forty-five, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts. Article fifty, entitled Commercial Districts. Article fifty-five, entitled M, Manufacturing and Industrial District. Article sixty, entitled CF, Community Facility District. And Article sixty-five, entitled Recreation and Open Space District, to require that the finished side of fences face outward, providing for exceptions, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor?
Go right ahead. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Mayor, this is, again, the ordinance that we call the Good Fences, Good Neighbors ordinance, or Good Fence Neighbors ordinance. And as a result of this, what this ordinance says is that you put the nice side of the fence out to the road or out to your neighbor. At the last council meeting, there was a live discussion about the need for, potentially for a fence to be reversed with the not-nice side facing outward in cases where the fences are holding in livestock. So, we have added language to the draft, the loose draft, that's on your counter, that we would like you to consider adding to the ordinance to give the exemption for agricultural purposes. I noticed through Councilmember Jablonsky, who caught an error, on page two, leading up to page three, the language should have been there as well, but we'll add that after the fact. But I just want to read the language for the council, and that is this provision, the provision that requires the fence to be facing nice side outward, shall not be applicable to fences being installed to maintain livestock when best management practices dictate that the unfinished side of the fence should face outward to help to ensure that the livestock is maintained. So, we're recommending, based on the full discussion last meeting, that that would resolve the residents' concerns, and we're recommending that if you are so inclined for this motion, to include the amended language to protect the agricultural properties.
I'll adjust my motion to include the amended wording.
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was going to put it out to public comment. Any public comment related to this item?
I'm going to fix that.
Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any comments on this?
I have one, just for clarification.
Okay, Keith.
You don't have to have an ag exempt to be able to put the bad side out if you have livestock, such as horses or some. Just...
If you're ag exempt, you don't even need a building permit. So, we made sure in this one that it's just for agriculture, for livestock in general.
Livestock in general. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Physickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Number nine, please.
In ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances, Section ten dash twenty-three, definitions under Article two, tree preservation, and Chapter ten, environment, to change the definition of nuisance tree, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Section zero seven five dash zero sixty, plant material in Article seventy-five, landscaping requirements to change the list of prohibited plants, and to require removal of such plants from construction sites prior to issuance of a building permit. Amending Section zero seven five dash one one zero, single-family requirements to require removal of prohibited plant species from construction sites prior to issuance of a building permit for a principal structure, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Keith, go ahead and explain this one.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Freddie, second.
Freddie, second.
Sure, Mayor and council. This one, again, is pretty straightforward. Based on what we heard last week, in an issue with processing and how inspections go between building and zoning, this would require residents who are doing major new construction to remove the evasive exotics from their property prior to the main structure, so that we don't have an issue trying to remove evasive exotics after the house is already built. So, this just is common sense, but it's here for your approval.
Okay. Any public comment related to this item?
Just a couple of questions I'd like to have clarified. One, what is the definition of major new construction? And does that include, like, putting a shed on the property, like a Ted shed or something like that?
Sorry, let me just address that now, because I was vague, because the council knows from last time. It's a construction of a principal structure on your property. Okay. That should resolve all your issues.
Any other public comment? Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any comments with the council? We're good?
No.
Awesome. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Physickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
In ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article ten, entitled definition of terms to define the term composting or mulching operation, amending Article fifty-five, entitled M, Manufacturing and Industrial District, to revise the list of permitted conditional and prohibited uses, and the limitations of uses pertaining to composting, mulching, recycling, and other waste processing, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sure, Mayor. Just real quickly, attorneys out representing businesses, mostly, not even residents, really, businesses, were attempting to claim that the town's code was unclear, and that they should be allowed to have full-blown mulching operations at their establishments, in nurseries, in single-family homes, and otherwise in the town. As a result, this avoids the necessity to go to court every time, and clarifies the code that you cannot have a mulching operation in the town.
Okay. Public comment. Do we, anybody care to have any discussion about this? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any questions? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Physickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with Erdman Anthony for Construction Engineering Inspection Services for the Sterling Road guardrail improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order, and providing an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Nothing on this. Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
I think Andy wanted to explain something.
Andy?
I just wanted to explain what this was, if you wanted...
Go right ahead.
If you guys have read through it. But just, I know you guys are familiar with it, for the purpose of the record.
Okay.
This completes the guardrails along Sterling Road. It's funding that we got from the state. One of the requirements from our state is that we have an independent engineering firm monitor the work. That's also funded by the money that we got from the state. Erdman Anthony has done this work for the town in the past, and they're on a continuing services contract with the town.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Physickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay. One quick thing I want to say. Go ahead, Andy. I'm going to pass it to you.
Yeah, just, I just want to let you all know, we, Councilmember Jablonsky had asked me about the household hazardous waste event scheduled for the fourteenth. And I have good news for you. I was able to confirm tonight that we are on, that collection event will be a go for the fourteenth.
Great. Great news. Now, the other thing is, is that you have Waste Pro here, and you have Bergeron's group here. So, any questions you all have, feel free to ask them. We can socialize, visit, whatever you all want to do for the next little bit. Other than that, meaning adjourn?
Good.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so just...